Begin the recording. The time is now five P M. One point one, one point two. Good evening and welcome to the second session of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four proposed budget work session of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Today is February second, two thousand and twenty three. Tonight, board members will have a second opportunity to ask questions and receive responses from the administration. My name is Judy McInnes Murray, Board Chair. Tonight, we have Spanish interpretation services available. Ms. Lopez, would you please make an announcement that Spanish interpretation is available to viewers by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen?
La interpretación en español está disponible para los espectadores haciendo clic en el icono del globo en la parte inferior de la pantalla. Haga clic en el globo y selección en español.
Thank you. This meeting is currently being livestreamed via YouTube. For viewers who are not able to observe at this time, the meeting is also being recorded. This information will be on our board webpage and also available on the Prince George's County YouTube channel for later viewing. The Board of Education has convened this evening for the sole purpose of engaging in a question and answer session on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four proposed operating budget, which was presented by our C E O, Dr. Monica Goldston, at that December eighth, two thousand and twenty two board meeting. Roll call. Ms. Lopez, please call the roll.
Mrs. Adam Stafford? Mrs. Adam Stafford? Ms. Booze Strutter?
Here.
Mr. Briggs?
Present.
Mr. Saran Ruiz?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Present.
Dr. Carey?
Here.
Mr. Jackson? Mr. Jackson? Mrs. LaSalle Frazier?
Present.
Dr. Juanita Miller?
Here.
Dr. Sipara Miller?
Present.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mrs. McInnes Murray?
Here.
We have four, Madam Chair.
Thank you. One point four, adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda for the February second, two thousand and twenty three proposed budget work session?
So moved.
For a second? It has been moved and seconded in discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Two point oh, budget discussion topic. This portion of the agenda is designated for budget questions and answers. Each division is allocated a total time of thirty minutes for board members to ask questions and administration to respond. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Kenneth F. Harris, the second Chair of the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee for any comments and to facilitate the question and answer session.
Thank you, Chair. Hopefully everyone can hear me. All right. Good evening, board member staff, public. We're going to jump right into it tonight. One thing about tonight is we actually have five categories to speak on, so we'll be limiting each section to a little under twenty-five minutes. Well, I'm sorry, Dr. Goldson, sorry, hand up.
I'll let you finish.
Okay, so board members, being conscientious of time, we're conscious of time, I'd like to suggest that our first and second rounds both be three minutes, and if we do have additional time, we'll have a third round for two minutes. That way, folks can get their questions out, hopefully. We'll see how that goes for the first, the first sections, and they will move into it accordingly. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Goldson to introduce her first chief that will be speaking tonight, or each chief that will be speaking tonight, and then we'll open the floor for questions. Dr. Goldson.
Thank you so much. Tonight, we have four divisions and then my office. The first will be Business and Management Services, which is led by our Acting Chief Financial Officer, Lisa Howe. Next will be my office. After that will be Chief of Staff, Mr. Michael Dickerson, Human Resources, followed by, which is Dr. Kristi Baldwin, and Information Technology, which is Dr. Andrew Zakman. I am going to ask for everyone, if you're not in that division that's presenting, to please cut your cameras off. That way, the people that are on the screen will be the board members and the actual division that is presenting or who is actually being asked questions. So the very first division is Business and Management Services. Thank you.
Sorry, I lost the screen there. All right, so board members, open the floor up to questions now for Business Management Services. And while you all get ready for questions, similar to last week, on that same document that we've been accepting additional questions, that tab is open again for any question that is not asked during the session. It will make sure that they get submitted to the correct department, and you'll get a response. I'll also send you an email throughout tonight. So Ms. Howe for Business Management Services and board members, again, the floor is open for questions. As a reminder to the public already, we have submitted and received over twenty, twenty questions for these individual topics that we'll be discussing tonight. We have received the responses from administration. So again, board members, if you do not have follow-ups for Business Management Services, I will move on to the next section. Right, I'm not seeing any hands. So Ms. Howe, it looks like you are good to go for tonight. Thank you for answering those questions in advance, and thank you for submitting them back to board members and and we'll, we'll, we'll let you off the stage now. Dr. Goldson for Chief Executive Officer, you say you're next, right?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
All right, open the floor up for any questions of our Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Monica Goldson. Again, board members, the floor is open. Mr. Fields?
The mute button got me this time. Dr. Goldson, good evening. I would just like to know if you feel that the budget has adequate resources embedded in it to deal with what we see coming out of COVID in terms of learning loss? Are we, do we have sufficient resources to meet the needs of those student populations that we saw were truly disproportionately affected during the COVID pandemic?
You will find that we actually use much of our ESSR funds to help with what's considered learning loss, but we've also embedded funds in the Division of Academics, which was reviewed last Thursday, and we have filled those gaps with our own operating budget. As we know, those funds will expire September two thousand and twenty-four. So yes, we do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Walker and board members, please remember to keep your audio muted when you are not speaking, please, and then followed by Chair McInnes Murray. So Vice Chair Walker and then Chair McInnes.
Thank you so much. Sorry, there's a feedback with my TV, I think, but um, I'm so sorry. The question that I have, so first of all, thank you, Dr. Goldson, for all the work you and your team are doing, particularly around the budgets. Super appreciative of that. My question is, in District Nine specifically, we are not considered transition neighborhoods. However, a lot of our funding are going to transition neighborhoods, and I was wondering, how do you inside of the budget process handle, you know, neighborhoods that aren't transition neighborhoods for funding?
So, so can you define what you're considering a transition neighborhood?
Yes, thank you.
Community schools?
Well, community schools are in, yes. So, community schools are typically inside of areas where our poverty are high, if I'm understanding correctly or what it is that I see. Inside of District Nine, we have needs, but our poverty rates are not as high as others. So I would love to be able to see some of those community services inside of our areas, and, but we don't have access to them, and so I was just wondering, maybe, can you tell me how we access those?
So, our community schools have been defined by our free and reduced meals percentages, and that has been identified by Maryland State Department of Education. So we receive funds for those schools through the blueprint for Maryland schools. So based on that threshold, the percentage, that's how we receive those funds. The numbers, the percentage continues to decrease, the, the threshold continues to decrease, and that's how we're able to add schools each year. We're up to ninety-seven schools. So every year that they decrease, there's a probability that there will be more schools added with the potential of some that are in your area. But it is managed by the state.
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Dr. Goldson, thank you. I wanted to comment on the ESSR funds. I attended the Advocacy Institute this weekend and then the National School Boards Association, and one of the things I championed everywhere I went and everywhere I could meet a congressman or a senator was that we needed those ESSR funds extended. I recognize that it, it sunset in two thousand and twenty-four, but we have some friends now. We, we met a few friends. I, I want you to know that. So we, we got your back. So thank you so much. Thank you for your advocacy. I'm sure other people in the state of Maryland will also benefit and appreciate it as well. So thank you.
Vice Chair, walk your hands up again, or you're?
It is up again. I am, I have a plethora of questions, even though people have already answered them. Thank you. So I'll use my quick time.
Sorry, one, one second. Let me go to Mr. Valentine, and then I'll come back to you, just so I get your first one in a second round. Thank you.
Thank you, and this is to my, my colleague and Chairwoman McInnes Murray, we were together on the Hill, and obviously questions around how the money was spent came up. Some of you may have been, you know, been hearing some news out of our neighbors in the district about some stories about how their money was spent. And it may be important clarification, would this budget, and if not your office, which office would be responsible for presenting out over a short term and long term, how the money was spent and what the impact it was on, on student achievement?
So presentation is actually slated from Dr. Carol Libby to, I want to say it is the Obafa Committee on February fourteenth, I think it is, fourteen to fifteen coming up. I'll send it to you via email just to have the accurate date, but the team is already doing a presentation to one of the subcommittees. So you can access that information there, or you can, if you don't have time to attend, then you can access that video from the presentation that they're already planning to do for one of the Board of Education subcommittees. That information will also be posted on our website after the presentation.
Thank you.
Maybe it's actually Policy and Governance Committee after I thought Boozer Strutter raised her hand. I think it might be that committee. Thank you, Alvaro. It must be. Okay.
Okay, sorry, board member Boozer Strutter, and then Vice Chair Walker. Sorry, still getting through first round here.
Yeah, thank you so much, and once again, thank you, Dr. Goldson and the team for, for this, the budget and the presentation. I wanted to check in on the topic of communication, since that's been such a hallmark of your superintendency and C E O, your expansion of all the various ways that communication has, has gone out to parents, and of course, multiple languages. In terms of, you know, where, where you saw any gaps this past year and growth for this new budget, and you, and any new, new ideas and technology that are coming out of the Communications Department to, to reach that full coverage, because I know the statistics about a year ago were about fifty percent of parents on the email list. And if that's grown, and also be curious to hear a little bit about the use of video, which was new this year, the weekly video, and the metrics coming back on how useful that's been to the, to parents and school community. Thanks.
Thank you. That actually falls under the Office of Communication, which reports to the Chief of Staff, so that section is actually next. So I'm sure that Ms. Hill is listening, so I'm going to ask that when that division comes forward, that she actually responds to the question.
Okay, appreciate it.
She's next. Thank you.
Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you. Dr. Goldson, please advise me to the right person if it is not you. Thank you so much. My question really is around, I saw, you know, mental health is so big. Thank you for Wellness Wednesdays and all that you do. The question is, when I took a look at the, our therapist and how for our mental, if I'm looking at the right line, yes, our therapist, they stay pretty much the same, and I was just wondering, is this because we think we don't need more therapists, or is it because we are having, you know, just trouble filling the therapist that we currently have? I was just wondering if you could talk to us about the strategy for, for that a little bit.
Sure. Mental health actually falls under the Office of School Leadership and Support, but just so you know, we on the board have had a, just a rollout plan of a certain number of mental health providers each year. This school year will now conclude the total number that we needed. So each year we incrementally increase them. We're up to one hundred and sixty-seven schools that have mental health providers, so the number might be seen small now. It's just because we're using those remaining ones, so that every school, over one hundred and ninety-eight schools now have a mental health provider.
Oh, that's so good. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, colleagues. Last call for questions for our Chief Executive Officer. Mr. Briggs?
Yeah, thanks so much for recognizing me, and hello, Dr. Goldson. I had a question, I had a question about the equity, elementary equity pilots that we have put in place, but I want to change the question from asking about the results of the, of those, of those pilots and more to think about what strategies Prince George's County has in place to really rethink education. I know that there's been a lot of conversations in education policy spaces across a number of different school districts around how to exactly address the, the academic gaps and the other challenges that we've been facing post-pandemic. So I was just curious if you could speak to what some of those strategies could be as you're thinking, and I know you're exiting soon, but as you're thinking about just the transition in, in the kind of wealth of experience that you've brought.
Are you relating, are you talking about academics? Are you referring to the, our equity leads that are in each of our schools?
I think more the vision for what you think as far as what Prince George's County needs as you're kind of moving into this next phase of your professional career, where we put money. So it's a big question, but I just.
That is, and I think that's why we got all these divisions presenting. All of, each division has a need to kind of begin to close that gap. You'll see that the bulk of our funds are invested in our Division of Academics as well as our School Leadership and Support, because we put money in for student-based budgeting, which allows funds to be directly at the schoolhouse to support our work. So you'll find it there, but in terms of where we are in terms of our equity leads, that division actually is right after Chief Dickerson, that'll be under Human Resources, which is where Mr. Reese will present that information.
Okay, all right, thanks so much.
Yep, no problem.
All right, colleagues, Mr. Briggs, yeah, okay, here goes a go. Any last minute questions for our Chief Executive Officer? Again, last call. See, Mr. Dickerson has turned his camera. He's ready. Because he's next, right? All right, Dr. Goldson, I think you're good. I think you're good to go. I appreciate you. Colleagues, next will be speaking with Chief of Staff, Mr. Dickerson. The floor is now open for questions.
Dr. Harris, I have an option for you as well. We also have General Counsel on who reports to Dr. Goldson. She's a dotted line to the Chief of Staff, so she's, she's in no man's land, if you will, but she works with both of us, and so she's also available.
So colleagues, also questions for General Counsel for Chief of Staff as well. Mr. Fields?
Good evening, Mr. Dickerson. I have two communications-related questions. One, do we have a sense of what the open rate is for email out to parents? And two, what has been the most effective platform in reaching, in reaching parents? Is it, is it email? Is it Facebook? Is it, you know, Twitter? Do we have some sense of how effective each of those platforms are?
So I'll start, and then Associate Superintendent Raven Hill is on, and I would just say that, you know, in terms of effectiveness, we don't always categorize it by the number of people who open an email, but how deep we get into a community. So if we can, so what I'm talking about is like more of a growth model. So if we started the year and we were only reaching, let's say, and this is just a number I'm throwing out as example, if we were only reaching through all of our platforms, let's say, two, three percent of our Latino community, as an example, last year, but this year we increased that number to seven, eight, ten percent, we would see that as very effective, even though that might be considered much lower than some of the other populations we're reaching out to. So when we talk and look at effectiveness, we're looking at growth models in terms of how effective we can be to growing the number of people we're reaching, regardless of what that total number is, and I'll stop there and let Dr. Raven Hill chime in, but we can talk certainly more about our communications tools and how we deem them effective or not.
Thank you, Chief Dickerson, and Board Member Fields, thank you for the question. Our open rate in the past has been around forty percent. I'm trying to grab an exact number for you, but it's all fairly sketchy. In terms of social media platforms, we have one of the largest Twitter following among large city districts, so we do rely pretty heavily on Twitter, but to reach parents, Facebook is, is always the best method. In terms of reaching particular segments of our community, we found that text message is best, so we certainly encourage our parents and families to sign up for our e-alerts through text message, especially with, when it comes to bad weather. They also want to know that. I can get you more detailed data in terms of how far down into a newsletter. Let me read, because that, that information is important to us as well.
Great, thank you for that, and, and forty percent open rate is really good. I mean, industry standards is around twenty-five to twenty-seven is considered excellent, so I commend the district because that shows some real penetration in terms of parents actually opening those emails. So that's, that's great work, and any additional information you could provide on the platforms, I'd appreciate it.
And Mr. Fields, I would add that what you're talking about is exactly what we're monitoring in terms of the strategic plan and how we consider ourselves successful in what we're doing towards the strategic plan. We're monitoring all those topics you discussed to, to see how well we're doing really reaching out to, to our community.
Board Member Fields, the PGCPS website is also an important tool for us, but we also remind people that parents tend to go to the school website more so than the homepage.
Thank you, colleagues. I apologize. I didn't see which hand went up first, but we'll do Vice Chair Walker, then Board Member Adams Stafford, followed by Board Member Rosalia Bridge.
Hi there, Ms. Hill. It is so good to put the face to the name. Thank you so much for being here. I have a question on the advertising other costs, which is underneath of communications, and I was just wondering if that also included, let me give you a backdrop. We have a lot going on by way of fentanyl and a lot of other pressing big issues that are affecting our Prince George's County Public Schools as well as the nation, and so I'm just wondering, do you dig into that specifically for funding or what we are going to push forward by way of increase, like information to our parents, et cetera, from the overall level, not just the school level? And if that's included in advertising, or if you can tell me if that's like the school level to do it, I'm just hoping that something in here is really a push for maybe something that we're seeing at a a huge Prince George's County Public School level that we want to put some advertising dollars in. Does that include that, and does it also include television? Thank you.
Okay, so we can push information to our parents directly through our email platforms. Our advertising costs might be a back-to-school supplement and ad for a commemorative month, things like that, but we also work with different departments to support their advertising needs, such as career and technical, technical education. There's a very big marketing campaign around that, things of that nature.
Okay, super clear. Thank you. So I think what I'm understanding, Ms. Hill, is that these advertising dollars are not necessarily for that. We use our websites for that and other type of media for that, but these type of dollars right here are for anything that affects PGCPS, kind of like overall. Is that what I think I'm hearing?
Yes, but if we need to do an advertising campaign, we can.
It comes here. Yes, thank you so much. Okay, and, okay, last question on this part C is if that is true, that if we think that there is something that needs to be there, do we follow the normal processes of going through the C E O and to come to you to ask if those advertising dollars? So you actually manage this budget under Communications?
Yes, with collaboration, in collaboration with the Communications Director.
Thank you so much.
Board Member Adams Stafford.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize, I'm not on camera right now. I will be shortly. I wanted to ask in regards to communications, if there is a set aside or a possibility for the board to have some dedicated support in regards to communication? So for example, I know that many of us on the board are interested in, you know, rebranding and really promoting some of the positive work that is happening from a board, the board level perspective. For example, things that are happening within our district or, you know, promoting initiatives that we may be undertaking or helping people to meet the board in, in our advisory and auxiliary groups. But it seems like, you know, we don't really necessarily have like dedicated staff for that, which could, I think, go a long way in helping us to share what we're doing. We just recently launched our social media pages for the Board of Education and want to use those mechanisms. Nation, and so I'm wondering if, if in the past there have been dollars dedicated to supporting the board with specific, board-specific communications? And if not, is there room for that this year to, to help us to beef up our communication with parents and families?
Board Member Stafford, we would work to support you through the Board Office. We're available to offer assistance on best practices, but we would really prefer to work with the Board Office on those matters.
And any decisions around F T E would have to be board-approved and fall under the board's budget, not administration.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful to know, and so in just generally what you're saying in regards to working with the board staff, like for example, like if we wanted like a communication strategy or any type of support in that way from the Communications Office, like helping us develop like, you know, some press releases or like a, a schedule for posting on our social media, you're saying that either it would need to be a position that's created through the board's budget or the board office, we need to connect with your office to specifically request those items. Is that what I'm hearing, or?
So let me jump in here, because I really would hate to see the board spend money on something that we could assist with, right?
Right.
We have expertise, we have experts in communications,
Yes.
community engagement that can certainly work with the board office, and I would say, remind you that the board office is part of the Chief of Staff Division now, and so we're working more collaboratively, and I think that's a benefit to the board. So if, if there was some need for training around press releases, social media and the like, we would certainly have the communications team work with the board office staff to do that, so that you're not going outside to get a, a vendor for something that we can certainly provide. I think what Dr. Goldson is talking about is, is obviously correct, is if, if you were talking about somebody who was, you know, on staff to do just that, that's a different conversation. But, but again, I would say it's important that the administration. That's a different conversation. But, but again, I would say it's important that the administration and the board as much as possible are aligned in our communication. So they were speaking, uh, from one voice. And so, um, we, we want to and try to collaborate as much as possible. Uh, around communications that need to go out, even if it's for a specific district.
Yeah, and I think that could be a, a great area of collaboration because I, I know that for a lot of us as board members. Like we're developing our own external-facing communication and, you know, I, we're not like well-versed as communication specialists. Um, in, in our board staff, that's not necessarily their background. Um, and so thi- this could be a good opportunity for us to maybe even develop some type of board communication strategy. Um, so that we can share information, um, effectively with our communities as well. Also, thank you for that response.
Sure.
You know what? Um, I'm sorry. Yeah, uh, just real quick to, um, Board Member, um, Shayla. There are so many other free resources for Planaly and things like that. And so I think that also as a board, cause I love your question. I think also as a board collaboratively, we might be able to even share best practices and work with Mr. Dickerson to be able to kind of list those out. On what we do think we know so that they can help to train us in the most effective way. Love your question. Thanks.
All right, colleagues, we've got about thirteen minutes left, um, with the Chief of Staff. Board Member LaSaya Frazier, see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Uh, my question is about, um, a little more, uh, clarification on question number five. That we had a response in terms of interpreters that, and the pool of interpreters that we have available. Um, in the, in your response, you said that there's a ten percent increase of need with, uh, from countries like Guatemala, Honduras, El Salvador. And a nine percent increase on, um, languages from Afghanistan. So I'm wondering, um, and it also says that you are, um, aware that there's a need for, uh, more interpreters. And perhaps having an in-house, um, service. But I'm wondering, how are we trying to alleviate that, that gap? And are we considering any grow your own programs or any other, um, possible strategies to get, uh, more Spanish? And, um, other language interpreters?
Uh, well, we do have a grow your own program, um, partnership with Parkdale High School, um, I believe. Um, our language access supervisor, Dr. Jennifer Love, and her team helped to develop a curriculum to encourage more of our students. Uh, to come into, um, interpreting and translation services. Uh, but in the meantime, we are able to supplement, uh, some gaps with, um, by outsourcing, um, services. Uh, we have, uh, services by phone who can help to fill, um, those gaps when our team may not be available.
Yeah, because one of the things that I've noticed in my visits to schools is, um, um, a lot of the, uh, teachers are, um. Feeling the stress of having to be interpreters or translators, um, in addition to their regular duties. And that is causing, uh, undue stress on them. So I'm wondering, you know, um, if we can, um. Look at our budgets in terms of having at least one interpreter in each of the schools that is not a teacher. Would that be possible?
Well, I would also, um, look to remind our staff of the existing resources.
Correct, but I'm just thinking about teachers and what they're saying.
You know, I think that's a larger conversation, uh, because you're, you know, it's quite a few staff members you'd be adding. I don't see a problem with that in terms of the idea of it, but in terms of the dollars of it, it's a conversation we would want to have and determine where. They would, uh, you know, where that budget would go. But in the meantime, I think what Ms. Hill is saying is that, you know, we need to do a better job. Perhaps of making sure that schools and staff know that we have resources available so that they're not, uh. Constantly consistently relying on these staff members who, as you said, uh, are teachers and, and need to do that as their first, uh, uh. Matter of business. So we'll, we'll continue to reach out to schools and make sure that they're aware of the, uh, resources we have available.
Appreciate that.
Sure.
Board Member Field.
Another question on communications and without divulging too much information. How aligned is our crisis communications response with, um, county emergency services? Uh, for example, if there is an incident in a building, do we have the ability based upon information from emergency services? To communicate with staff in that building quickly, um, to give them notification. That there is an incident in that building. Um, and how often do we, uh, review? Uh, those plans, uh, with emergency services to make sure that we are, um, prepared, you know? In, in case of the, you know? Tragedy.
Exactly my department.
Yep, I'll respond to it. It actually, that falls under security services. Um, we do have access to staff where we can, um, alert them of the potential to lock down. To secure, et cetera. Um, we have connections directly with our local and our county police department. And so we, we, we have the ability to communicate with them.
Board Member Adam Stafford.
All right, thank you. Um, I, uh, last year I had asked a, a question specifically around. The translation of our board documents to be. In alignment with the state policies on the, um, accessibility of government documents. Um, and so I think the response was that the school district was going to outsource this. Or, or contract out, uh, someone or an entity to, to actually, uh, execute that. So I just wanted to know if that was something that was included in this budget, um, just to ensure that the documents that are on board docs are accessible. Or is, is that, um, yeah, is that something that we should be thinking about adding in?
I don't recall the question. I can certainly, um, um, look more into it. But I would say this, if you, if you're talking about items that, um, are going into board docs, there also would probably want to be a conversation with board docs. To see what they have available. Um, we're certainly paying a fee, uh, to have the use of board docs. And so I would think that, you know, we check there, but I'd have to work with Ms. Hill and, and, and get back to you on what we have in terms of accessibility. Those, uh, documents you're speaking of.
Thank you. And I can email this question. I had actually just asked this in like a separate email, uh, last year. So it wasn't actually part of the budget process. I wasn't sure if this was like a policy or a budget question. But I can send that separately. Um, but I do think that that would be something that would be useful for our, um, multilingual learners. To be able to access our board documents and to bring us some in alignment with the state law.
Yeah, please send it, send it over.
All right, we've got about six minutes left, um, with our Chief of Staff. Any last minute questions, colleagues? Before we move on to human resources. Okay, Mister Valentine, Board Member Valentine.
I guess this would be for, uh, Raven, um, the question, and this is something I've been, I've been talking with some superintendents around the country. My other capacity about, um, superintendents starting your own podcast. Um, is that something that you all envisioned for Dr. Goldson, uh, and/or her potential successor? About how to better communicate what's happening, some of the great things that are happening in the district. One thing I'm always, you know, I've been on the board for a while and the only thing, one thing I'm so surprised about is how little average citizens know about the innovation. Um, and I'll say, hey, you know, we got this, the only high school in the whole state that's physically located on a community college campus. I didn't know that. Oh, you know, we build houses. Really? Oh, we have, we already have CTE programs. Get out of town. Like, um, but districts are using the superintendent because anyways, that person is the figurehead and, and, you know. Um, is that something that you all envision, um, starting a podcast or a, uh, a TV show or, for the CEO?
So Board Member Valentine, we have explored a podcast, um, in the past. Um, we were interested in using it. To reach some targeted populations, um, and it became a bit of a staff capacity issue, but it's something we would absolutely love to do. Uh, we're always looking for more original programming, uh, for PGCPS TV. Um, I would love to see a chalk talk, uh, TV show with the superintendent. Uh, so those, those things are on the wish list, um, and we would certainly love to make them happen. Uh, but one challenge as well, uh, would be the need to make those programs, um, accessible from a, a language perspective.
Thank you. I mean, I, I just think the, the return would be pretty high. Um, I think particularly as it relates to, uh, parent enrollment. And some of our specialty programs. Oftentimes, people just don't know we have these programs because, um, you know. Whether or not, you know, privy to the information or, or where they're getting it from, um, I'm often, you know, surprised at some of our programs. Um, specialty programs that are, that are often under-enrolled, um, because of lack of information. So there's something, it's a recommendation moving forward.
Uh, I, I agree. And it's something we think that could help really parents, uh, just learn to navigate our huge system overall. So perhaps it's something we can do, uh, this fall.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your questions. Again, last call for our Chief of Staff before we move on to human resources. Okay, seeing no more questions. Thank you, Mister Dixon and Ms. Hill. Any last minute, um, comments before you both leave?
I do have some analytic data, um, that Board Members requested that, uh, you might be interested in hearing. Um, the open rate of our Spanish newsletter is up about twenty percent from last year. The weekly what-to-know video that was referenced earlier, um, has more than seventeen thousand plays across platforms. Our Facebook reach has increased seventy-seven percent over the same period last year in the last ninety days. And. That is, oh, and they confirmed, yes, our, our open rates, um, are above forty percent. Uh, range between forty and sixty percent exactly.
Thank you, Mister Dickerson.
No, I appreciate the opportunity and I just want to thank the rest of the staff who are here, but who is here, but did not, uh, get to speak. Uh, Dr. Kyra Libby, uh, we mentioned Tammy Turner, Robin Welsh from our Government Relations Office. And Shawna Battle, uh, from the Appeals Office. So thank them for being here and, and thank you for the questions tonight.
Thank you. All right, Human Resources, uh, Dr. Baldwin. I see you. There you are. All right, the floor is yours. Um, any statements you'd like to make before or?
Uh, well, good evening. Um, thank you for having us. We look forward to the discussion. I want to introduce the Awesome Human Resources Team and then, um, Board Member Dr. Harris. Before, um, we open to questions, would you like us to go back and respond to, uh, one of the questions that came from one of the board members? Or will you facilitate any follow-up? So just for clarification.
Yeah, please, please answer the question first. Um, if you recall which Board Member asked, feel free to do that as well, and then we'll go to new questions.
Okay. All right, thank you. So first, I'd like to, um, introduce Dr. Pearl Harmon. She is our Director of Operations and Staffing. If you could just raise your hand so they see you, but you have your name. Okay, thank you. Um, accompanying her is one of our senior partner, uh, for supervisor, a senior supervising partner for Human Resources. Operations and Staffing, Mister Curtis Eugene. Uh, we have Dr. Christie Holden, our Director of Office of Professional Learning and Leadership. We have Mister Jeffrey Carpenter, our Director of Employee Labor and Relations. And we have Dr. David Reese, our Director of Office of Equity and Excellence. So before we jump into the specific questions, I do want to follow up on the question I believe that Board Member Briggs asked about. What is the current work and then the vision for what we are doing as a school district regarding equity and excellence? In addition to, I will add on to that, just maybe Dr. Reese can also share about the board policy that actually leads the work of that office. Um, in addition, I believe that there was a question from last week from Board Member Adam Stafford about equity, um, audits. That we will be providing in, in written form, but Dr. Reese, if you're comfortable speaking to that tonight as well, please do so. So I will turn this over to Dr. Reese.
Okay, and I want to respond to the exact question. So would the Board Member remind, mind repeating?
Yes, happy to do so. Um, well, the question, which I'm very grateful that you all already answered, was in the documents. Let me just ask it. Um, are there any preliminary elementary equity pilot results? And can you just speak to what those results are? And, um, and what that tells us about kind of our next steps as a school district, if you could, based on the information you have?
Well, so I want to keep it brief because we only have thirty minutes, but there are so many different, um, pieces of data that we have. That let us know the impact that we've had, um, with a, advancing and achieving equity for our elementary school students. Um, so there's equity is a big word. So a lot of our school system really supports, uh, the work of equity. So the perspective that I'm going to speak from comes directly from the direct work that my office does. However, people then academics, other parts of human resources and IT can also speak to, uh, work that they've done. So we have a few major initiatives that, that we're sponsoring from our office. One of them is the work of welcoming schools. Um, helping to create more inclusive and welcoming school environments. So a lot of our, uh, elementary schools in K through eights have been attending professional learning around how to create gender diverse. And inclusive environments to support LGBTQ plus people. And a lot of the qualitative data that we get from surveys say that people are learning a lot more, understanding bias. Understanding how to intervene and support families who want to make sure that their children are safe and, and well represented in PGCPS. And then Dr. Goldson alluded to our Equity Lead Initiative. So one of the, um, strategic moves our office made was to request funds. To support teachers, mostly teachers, but other, um, personnel in schools who would be able to advance equity. With whatever the school's equity focus was. Often our principals, our administrators, um, especially in the past few years. Have been extremely overwhelmed with managing a school and being an instructional leader. And so we thought that helping to support equity leads and five key focus areas would help them figure out which of those focus areas. They could help support their schools in. So right now that's LGBTQ plus restorative approaches. So we do lots of cross-collaboration with other departments, supporting English language learners. There's a focus on black and brown boys. And last but not least, we support students receiving special education services. So lots of direct professional learning for those teachers. From our office to them to help them advance the work.
Thank you, Dr. Reese.
Thank you, um, Mister Briggs here. Any further follow-up on that?
Oh, uh, yeah, uh, thank you so much. I mean, actually I was, I appreciate the, the, the response. I was actually just thinking more. I know, I thought the equity pilots were about class size and addressing that and having, um, a pilot. At a few different schools around having specific types of staff. So I was just curious if there was any results specifically to that. Um, but I think everything else is really helpful and was good information, I know.
That is something, that's something I, I can speak directly to. I think there's probably another staff member who would be able to.
Okay, and we can also add it to the follow-up questions, Mister Briggs, and then Dr. Baldwin, you can take it to the appropriate staff member. Um, from there, from there. So colleagues, I'll open it up, uh, for new questions now, um, starting with Vice Chair Walker. And then anyone else who joins the queue, uh, Doctor Sappor Miller after Vice Chair Walker.
Hi, Dr. Reese. Uh, this is a comment that is really specifically for you. I just wanted to say thank you so much for, um, our last conference. That we attended. You really showcased Prince George's County Public Schools and how we are light years ahead of many school districts. Particularly in the South as related to LGBTQ. And I wanted to thank you for being a champion, um, on behalf of, uh, Prince George's County Public Schools. I am wondering, um, if, well, at the schools where I've been a part of, our equity teams that are there. Are really having small group sessions on LGBTQ. And I am wondering if there is anything that we specifically can do. As a board to, um, help pilot that as well. I know we're talking budget. And so as related to the budget, is there anything that is in there as related specifically to our equity groups? I know for the schools that I'm familiar with, they've chosen for, and if there's anything that we can do specifically in order to help, um, in that effort. Thank you so much.
Well, I appreciate the question and I'm supposed to do a slam dunk with this one because this is an open invitation to get more resources. But as I said the other day at the school board conference, um, well, well, first, thank you to the Board of Education for actually sponsoring. for actually sponsoring the initial funds to support our professional learning. You are granted $75,000 to actually help us partner with welcoming schools. And we built a lot of capacity with 15 people in our school district to be able to kind of support the work, and we still have that partnership. So in terms of funds right now, I actually, I'm going to say we can put our money elsewhere, but what we could use is continued advocacy via whatever communication channels you have to make sure that the world knows what PG CPS stands for and that we welcome and respect everyone in our school district. So more advocacy. Thank you for, for your compliment and honored to be able to represent the team, the entire system that's doing this work.
Dr. Z.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Board Member Harris. Dr. Baldwin, sorry, Dr. Baldwin, good evening and thank you. I just want to start with a comment, and I recall when you came to the board and Dr. Golson announced that you had championed with the Maryland State Department of Education to ensure that our provisional teachers had some relief in getting their certification, which really helped us retain some teachers. So just want to thank you for that. And then the efforts that Dr. Golson, Dr. Baldwin and the team have put together to ensure that we have the fourth highest salaries in the state and exceeding the state average. So in terms of recruitment, really ensuring that we can get the best teachers. And as we move into, as we continue to face this national teacher shortage, can you just speak to a couple of things? One, you know, how you allocate or are looking at continuing the recruitment efforts? And then the second part would be knowing that the number of teachers coming from a traditional school of education is decreasing. How we will continue to support provisional teachers?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for that question. So just, just a couple of things to make sure that I captured everything correctly. In regards to, I, I really do think we need to, as we work together as board administration, to really shift our conversation to we are now in a teacher crisis. It's no longer a shortage. A shortage implies that we are going to replenish something that's not there. And as you noted, a lot of the, our colleges and universities are not able to even recruit individuals into the profession. So we are being very cognizant of that and then looking at what are ways that we can do differently. You know, we basically have four generations of employees in Prince George's County Public Schools. And so one of the things we realized for our new generation is their ease and comfortability with technology. And how do we recruit them in a way where they can apply on their phone? So we have actually realigned and worked with our information technology office to put a substantial amount of money for recruitment into our technology platform to change the way our applicant tracking system works so that our individuals, we can say, hey, if you're out there, you're brand ambassador. Here's the link, go ahead and apply. So the, those are some of the things that we're trying to do a little different in our work. In addition, we were kind of ahead of the game with the United States Department of Education when they had suggested to other school districts to use Career Fair Plus of Handshake, which is now the new way to have job fairs. It's no longer going to the high school and everyone coming in there. While we continue to do that, we also really maximized last year on the platforms of Career Fair Plus and Handshake. And I saw Board Member LaSalle Fraser shaking her head. It's very, very popular and we were able to really maximize that. We also have a very strong annual media campaign as well as we really were grateful to be the recipients of the Maryland League Grants to beef up our Grow Your Own program. So we have partnered with Notre Dame where we have 40 pair of professionals who are excited and working towards their teacher certification. We have our Resident Teacher Program, which I think I shared with you all in May, that we now support individuals getting ESOL certification. We have our Support to Teacher, our own separate program for that. And then I think to end on your question about what can the board do? And as far as certification, a few years ago, you all graciously funded us and our teachers through the Conditional Educator Program. So one of the things we know if our colleges and universities are no longer able to meet the capacity that or the capabilities of the number of teachers we need, we have to look at career changers or individuals looking for a different career, and that means they have to earn a conditional certificate. So that costs money. So we are grateful that you all gave the funding for that. And we have, I think, about three, and Dr. Herman, please correct me, about three or four cohorts of individuals that you have funded to move from a conditional certificate to a provisional certificate. So we continue to build up that program and would hope that that continues to stay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Board Member Adam Stafford and then Board Member LaSalle Fraser. And then Board Member Valentine, in that order. We'll jump to you.
Thank you so much for this presentation. I always love to hear about how we are really working to attract more educators to our district and the innovative things that we're doing. So thank you so much for sharing that with us. To ask specifically about, oh. Okay, it's not muted. Okay, I wanted to ask specifically about our existing school-based health clinics. So from what I understand, and I believe there is one actually in my district at Fairmont Heights. Maybe if you could tell me just a little bit more about how those are staffed. We know school-based health clinics are, you know, just so important for entire communities to have access to healthcare, and we have several of them here. And I guess I'm wondering, do we have a coordinator that supports specifically with ensuring that those centers are well-staffed? And then I, I was going to ask if you could share the response to the equity audit, if that is something that you all have planned to do. Thank you.
But let me respond around the health centers. They actually, we actually have four. It is with the Memorandum of Understanding with our local health department. They are understaffed. They are to have, they initially were to have one staff person per site. It falls under the Division of School Leadership and Support. They now have a 0.5 position that fluctuate, that spends half of their time at one school, half at another. And we're actually looking at a different kind of structure because the health department has not been able to uphold their end of the Memorandum of Understanding.
Okay, could you speak a little bit more about what you all are looking to do? Are you looking to make them full-time or?
Well, since they already have a staffing issue to make them full-time, they're already full-time. They don't have enough staff. So we are potentially looking to do an RFP to see if someone else can do the work other than the local health department.
Okay, so just so that I'm clear, you're saying that the position is basically a PG CPS position, but it's filled by the health department? Or, I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Nope, this is in conjunction and partnership with our local health department. So we basically pay them to, to staff those four facilities. They're not doing a great job doing that. So we're going to put out an RFP to find someone else to do it.
Okay, so we paid them to staff it, but they have not been able to fully staff it. Okay. All right. Thank you so much. And then I guess the question regarding the equity audit.
Absolutely. So I would love to take the equity audit question. Thank you. Thank you for posing it. So when we think about equity audits, there are numerous types of equity audits that school systems engage in. It could deal with curriculum, hiring and staffing, promotion policies, et cetera. And each division has the opportunity to engage in those specific types of work. And I know that there are different elements of that happening throughout the system. With the strategic planning process and our relationship with Hanover, we have the opportunity to navigate, and I was just in it earlier today, an equity dashboard that allows us to do some pretty powerful comparisons between individual groups of students within schools and groups of schools across the system so that we can slice the data by lots of different demographic categories to determine where over and under representation exists in lots of categories like discipline, what students from which demographics are being disciplined, the frequency with which they're being, receiving a disciplinary incident. We can look at how students are performing on advanced placement exams. We can look at the types of curriculum that students are exposed to in terms of tech, et cetera. So through analyzing that, we're able to see what gaps exist and be able to pinpoint our efforts to support various student groups. So that's some specific type of equity audit work that we do every year through our strategic planning process. But if there's a more specific question, I would love to follow up with you at some point.
Yes, I guess my question is, do you all have plans to have an external audit conducted? So I guess what I've typically seen in districts nationally is that while they do have some equity protocols in place, and I do like what you're talking about with that equity dashboard and those frequent data meetings, having an outside third party?
You're breaking up a little bit, and I, I think, I think.
Having a third party look at those domains and then providing the district with recommendations. Is that something that you all have considered putting out, maybe an RFP around?
So from my office directly, we don't have any RFPs for that type of equity audit. However, I do know, for example, in the Division of Academics, they're doing some work around the social studies curriculum where there is an external partner who's helping to audit what's there and then offer recommendations. So there are lots of examples of that happening throughout the district on a smaller scale.
So this is a great dialogue. Thank you for your response, Dr. Reese. Board Member Adam Stafford, I've got three other people in the queue, so I want to jump over to them. Does that conclude your question, or can we follow up with additional questions to Dr. Reese and Dr. Baldwin instead?
Thank you. That answered the question. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Board Member LaSalle Fraser, Board Member Valentine, and then Board Member Fields, in that order, please.
Thank you. I have a few questions. The first one, we were discussing the number of HR positions that are filled right now by Latinx staff, and I think it was mentioned that we have three. And I was wondering, what capacity are they filled? What are the positions that they have?
What positions do they have? Two are administrative assistants and one is HR advisor position.
HR advisor, okay. I was looking back at previous budgets, maybe four years ago, and we had a position that I'm not sure if we've ever filled again, Executive Coordinator for Diversity. And that person left, and I don't think that we ever filled it. But what I noticed, there was a correlation with having that position and then, and a lot more Latinx staff. I think at that point, it was about 9%, and now I think we're at 4.6%. So I'm wondering, has there been any thoughts about having a specific position that replicates what that person used to do?
So I'm not familiar with that position. There was not such a position in Human Resources. I do believe there was a position in school support and leadership. I can go back and look at that and provide you the data. The data over the, at least the last five years is an increase in our Latinx population, not a decrease in staff numbers. But I can follow up with that in writing for you to review. And if you have anything to share with me on the data points that you reference, I would love to see those.
Most definitely. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Valentine.
Thank you. And, and this, my two questions are a response to, to recent interactions I had. Let me start off by saying, as I look from a national perspective, you know, I do this, you know, in other capacities, we are doing a lot more than most districts. And so I want to truly recognize what we're doing around our Grow Our Own, around our teacher pathway program at the Academy of Health Sciences at Prince George's. And so what we're doing is outstanding. I will say the two areas, you mentioned the four generations. And so the two I want to talk about, one is, is our high school students and then our retiree hires. And so yesterday I was at Bowie State University. They had an event launching or commemorating a grant they got for their black male, that black, black male student and teacher program run by Dr. Julius Davis. And at the, at the meeting, they had representative from Anarundel Public Schools who was there touting how they're helping to fund their, I believe they called the Black Male University, where they have high school students that are being taught by Bowie State undergraduate education students. And lo and behold, one of the local students from Bowie High School got accepted to Bowie University, was there celebrating him being there and is going through the teacher program. Roughly, they have 36 black males in their undergraduate teacher preparation program, outstanding. But they were not talking about particular partnerships we had with Bowie State. And so, you know, my question is, how can we either support that program or to engage with Bowie State to create a pipeline out of particularly our Academy of Health Science or other programs? I know there's being worked on at the Academy of Health Science, but also other non, other high schools. I know, I mean, you know, some of the questions you all mentioned, a lot, none of the high schools that we do have programs with, but how to partner with Bowie State? And my second question was another interaction I had with one, with a retiree hire who apparently her certification lapsed. And so now she's being paid as a more traditional substitute teacher and not as a retiree hire. And so now her substitute funding is going to be going down. I understand that to keep her certification, she had to pay, I think it's a monthly amount to the union, whoever that is. And so the question is, is a way to keep our retiree hires on board, and she's considering leaving because of this. How can we, using our budget, support? I know that the first part is probably more of a state policy, but I think the other part around them having to pay monthly to maintain their certification when we actually need them to be here for all the issues you mentioned around the crisis. So talk a little bit about, one, not only is Bowie State, but other universities, Morgan State. We can nod to my brother Walter Fields up there, but how we're working with your local universities to, to create pipelines out of those, out of our high schools into those universities and back into our school districts, but also how we're working to keep retiree hires and making sure it's not financially prohibitive for them to keep their certification and to stay as paid as retiree hire substitutes.
Thank you. One of the things I would ask if there's a way that you could follow up with me offline regarding this specific person. I, I would like to look into that. The state does require certification, so we would need to look and see what exactly is the certification issue and then support that individual. In regards to our partnership, we have a lot of partnerships. I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Harmon to talk about some of those, including, I know we, I believe we partner with the STAR program, but I do think that might be coming to an end. So I'll let Dr. Harmon speak to the, the programs.
Sure. Good evening. One of our programs that we have a partnership, it's with Bowie for a number of years. So we annually visit the schools and work with their educators to come on over to Prince George's County Public Schools. Of course, with University of Maryland, we spend a lot of the time there doing classroom visits and actually meeting with the students there. Historically, we used to be with their students in this College of Educations, but because we realized those universities are not producing students through the College of Educations, we started expanding to working with them to just get their students through their career centers. So individuals who may have those specialized background in math, science, English, so that they can perhaps come on over into the teaching profession, profession. Excuse me, first as of course a conditional educator, but then making their way through the programs in order to become fully certified. Through the Maryland Leads Program, we continue to have a relationship with the Notre Dame, Notre Dame, excuse me, of Maryland. That program particularly is for our support personnel, as Dr. Baldwin referenced earlier, to get them to become certified. But for years, they have provided low-cost tuition to our current teachers to become fully certified as well. Trying to think of the other ones. We visit Houston University annually, do school health visits there. Our, from the academic lens, our ESOL office have a number of programs and even special education, have a number of partnerships with other universities in order to have educators become fully certified. So across the, the board, it's not just in the human resources, but there are partnerships through academics with other organizations, other universities that also support our educators and become fully certified. Dr. Valentine, you remember last year, we had the Men's Make a Difference Diversity Series to support our male educators and come into the district. So we of course will be calling you again this spring to help us just put out the word and have more male educators. So we, of course, will be calling you again this spring to um help us just put out the word and have more male educators join our districts. We work closely with some of our male, with many of our male principals to help us recruit as well. Um, for our our male population. And Dr. Holland perhaps can talk a little bit about the work that we do with our current international students. So that those individuals are serving as ambassadors to get the word out about joining PGCPS and why it is they can come here and how we will continue to support them.
Thank you, Dr. Harmon. We actually have an international um teacher support system that we use that our. Our team works um with our international teachers, working with their certification and just learning. The different ways that we do things in Prince George's County versus where they may have gotten certified to teach. We are, we do partner with the STAR program and we have students that come in intern with our educators. And they work with our professional development schools and we're working with them. Our concern has been with them is that they work with our schools, but they don't, they have trouble passing the praxis. So we have a praxis program. We're we're working with um those students. And we're also working with the students at the Academy of Health Sciences. They're majoring in um education to work with them with their practices also. We had a great turnout last spring with the with the Maryland, um with the Academy of Health Sciences. And those students were able to um work on Saturdays with um some of our educators to work with the um praxis. So that they could pass the praxis and um graduate.
Do we have, I mean, uh, thank you and for that. Um, and so, yes, in your in your summation, what's the return on that investment? Um, the percentage of students from Bowie State who are graduating with an education degree, who are becoming educators. Um, I'm saying this because again, I'm I'm here at this event last night and I'm seeing Anarundo. Public schools, um, and you know, I'm I'm very territorial. I'm like, y'all are in Prince George's County. Y'all need to stay where y'all and go out to Anarundo. Start an HBCU and do something else. But um, I'm territorial. Um, I'm also territorial statewide, absolutely. So again, Morgan State, Coppin State. Um, and the like, we had everything we need right here in the state. Um, is there a way, how how can we, whether it be through a bonus, through, you know, a Morgan Bear, Bowie State. You know, uh, extra, say, you know what, if you if you come in and you're from these universities, uh, here's an added uh incentive. Um, I mean, I'm I'm just inspired what's happening in Bowie State. I just think, yeah, I'm just curious about how we can do. And I'll send information to you offline. I want to hold you all up. I'll send it to you, Dr. Holden, uh, and Dr. Harmon. This uh, the the Blackmail University Program, uh, but they're doing excellent work um to really increase the number of. Uh, of black males, uh, high school students who are enrolling in Bowie State uh in the field of education.
We are also, thank you for that. Now, we are also having conversations with representatives from Thurgood Marshall Foundation. Who are focusing on our um graduates from HBCUs to come into education. And they're also want to work with our black males that are in Prince George's County that um to get to to retain them. So they're giving them supports and we're working with them to see how that program can support our um our scholars.
All right, colleagues. Um, thank you for your questions, Board Member Valentine. You got a popular group here, Dr. Baldwin. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna fill one last question for Mr. Fields and then we're going to uh move on to our next section. Cause we've actually kept you all overtime here. Uh, so Mr. Fields.
Uh, thank you, and I appreciate those responses and I would encourage um partnership with Morgan State University. I hear they produce some fine graduates and so, um, and I will also say that Morgan just established the National Center. For the Elimination of Educational Disparities, which is focused on a lot of these issues. So um, I will certainly facilitate that conversation as a Morgan um alum. Um, I just wanted to uh to to point out about the Grow Your Own approach. Because I had this conversation with Ike Leggett, who is the chairman of the Accountability Implementation Board. And we were talking about the difficulty, given the crisis of the numbers challenge we have right now. So part of this is a short term approach and part of this is a long term approach. And he was encouraging that when we look at Grow Your Own programs, that we drill down as deep as middle school. That we start looking at students in middle school to begin to interest them in a teaching career. And provide incentives for those children who are in middle school. So that by the time that they are in high school, they understand what is necessary to become a teacher. And then to provide that support post-high school graduation. So that we're providing sort of this linear uh support to a child who sees teaching um as an option. Because I know the numbers are daunting right now in terms of shortages. So we're we're probably going to live with this environment for about the next decade, right? But but we do have to take a long view and it's always good if we can have children who grew up in our school district. Who turn around and teach in our schools, just to have that familiarity with the with the district um and with our schools. So I ju- I just wanted to point that out because I think, you know, I love Grow Your Own, but I think we may have to go a little deeper.
Um, I I appreciate that feedback and and I I also agree. I think the um, you know, having conversations with him as well, I'm the vice chair for pillar two for the blueprint work. And so, um, you know, we will be looking at lots of different areas. I think the challenge that all school systems will encounter that researchers showed is the 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 results. You know, you invest kind of early and then you have to wait for long term results, as you said, so it it is a decade. Um, but I do think, um, you know, we have systems and structures in place through our teacher academy um program. That we can definitely partner with and see how we can go a level down on that. Um, in addition to one of the things I would continue to say, um, that you all have echoed as well. And that we as a system and and society have to be better about. And that is um a philosophy I live by, children do what you do, not what you say. And so if we continue to per- perpetuate a negative narrative around the actual field. Then we will not have anyone that wants to go into this field. So I think it's a incumbent upon us to start talking about how awesome teachers, teaching is, to get back to the joy of teaching. And that should be the next narrative. Um, and and I think that that's part of our campaign too. Um, that we will be uh showing off in March and we are going to make sure that we find all your universities and then invite you. Uh, to be brand ambassadors on our recruitment trips. So excited and happy to have as much dialogue as Mr. as Dr. Harris will give us when it comes to recruitment and retention of staff. So thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the questions and the great dialogue. Uh. See, Mr., I'm sorry, Board Member Valentine.
A real, a real.
Before, sorry, before you, before you ask the question, feel free to ask the question. I ask that staff take note of it and then they can respond. If it is a question, that way we can keep it moving.
To some, to some degree, I mean, I'm I'm seeing this news about Teach for America pulling back on staffing and cutting jobs. Um, I mean, if if you want to talk to me offline about the future of Teach for America and Prince George's County Schools. Is something that we're going to be using as a as an op- is a a plus up? Or are we are we ratcheting down um from our uh, so you know, use of of TFA educators?
Yes, thank you for bringing that. Um, actually, TFA informed us this year in the summer. That they were not going to be able to provide us with teachers because they too are impacted by the the teacher crisis. So that says a lot when large organizations like that can also not uh secure teachers. So they did um pull out of Prince George's County, um, the the Maryland part. And actually expanded more into Virginia and DC. Um, once again, uh Chair Mickens Murray, you know my advocacy and a lot of it, they said also had to do with certification in the state of Maryland. Um, so we have those, that's where we, if you, we realign funds um and other efforts to increase our our teacher recruitment and retention. So you are very accurate in what you said and happy to have more conversation offline about other things that that we can do.
Thank you for that question. I said, actually took note of it. Um, all right, any last minute comments from Dr. Baldwin before we. Let you off the stage.
No, I just wanted, well, yes, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. Um, I think it's a passion that all of us have. And you know, as much as we can partner, we will let you know through the board office of our recruitment events. We we need you there. We need everyone to be a brand ambassador. Prince George's County Schools is a phenomenal place and we don't do it justice with the things that we say. Um, we have closed a a contract like no other, thanks to Dr. Goldson and Mr. Burnett and Mr. Carpenter. I think our labor partners will say we have a teacher's contract that is phenomenal that we can use to recruit. Um, in addition to that, our benefits package is amazing. Um, just was sharing the other day. That we actually offer a life insurance policy like no other, where it's two times your current salary at no cost. No other school district does that. We also have data to show that if you remain with PGCPS over a twenty to twenty-five year career, you make more money with us than in any other school district in the DMV. So these are the things that, you know, we need to get out there and say. Um, as well as, you know, we have a beautiful diverse population. So anything we can do to provide you so that we can recruit and retain our teachers. In addition to, I'm not going to leave out Mr. Eugene with his drive with us background to get our bus drivers. We are, anything you think we need to do, we are willing and able to work with you to do it. So thank you again for this conversation and supporting our budget request through Dr. Goldson.
Thank you. All right, everyone, moving along to our last group for tonight, Information Technology, uh, Mr. Sorry, Dr. Zuckerman, I see that you're. Um, see, all right, colleagues, the floor is open for questions. I'd like Dr. Zuckerman to go first. If you would like to say anything before we get started.
Sure, um, it's a tough act to follow. Dr. Baldwin and her team, phenomenal. So uh, thank you for the opportunity to uh be with you tonight and answer any questions you have. We um are just continuing to uh strengthen our technology systems, our infrastructure, our support. To make sure that we can deliver on all of the the good work that you've heard from my colleagues um tonight and in previous sessions. So I appreciate the opportunity to answer any questions you may have.
Right, thank you, colleagues. The floor is open for questions around information technology as it relates to the fiscal year twenty-four budget. So is that awkward silence there? Right, okay, um, one member Valentine.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Zuckerman. Um, and I think the first thing comes to mind, I mean, I I come to this position as a as a parent first. Um, and as someone who has been um passed within my household. Uh, to help uh my son um and my daughter with the uh technology, obviously. Ensuring assignments are done, school math, Canvas and things like that. Um, would your office be responsible when this budget include funding to to train parents uh on use of the tech of our technology? Um, uh, that's my first question, um, particularly as as relates to. Um, how we fully optimize the use of our technology to ensure that uh we're giving all students a fair shot at at understanding where they are and then and helping them.
Yeah, thank you for that question. Um, you know, we've recently um part done a couple of sessions at our parent academies. Through our um Department of Family Engagement, Sheila Jackson Shop. So that's one mechanism for us in which we uh share our resources. Um, we did um a digital citizenship training, for example, we we did a Canvas overview. And we will continue to do more along those lines. We're we're building out our website uh to make it more parent friendly. So that there's more availability for uh parents to support their students. Um, but yes, we can certainly do more um uh around this in in the future. Um, with respect to Canvas, um, there was a specific question in one of our uh preliminary budget questions from the board. About um the parent module and parent functionality with Canvas. And that's something that we plan to introduce to the community later the school year for a launch of next year. And we'll have training and um opportunities and webinars that go with that. We just wanted to sequence the phase in of that um as a part of just the long term Canvas implementation. So it's a a long way of saying absolutely uh be happy to um uh set up additional workshops as needed. Um, we've we've tended to do it through our existing um our existing uh parent workshop uh format.
Same question, as I mean, you're, I'm sure you've been asked a million times over the last few weeks around around ChatGPT. Um, and what we have um to respond to it and financially and budgetary wise, do we have the resources? Um, on board or in this budget to to address any anything around training, around sophomore and updates. Um, in the in the coming, in the coming year.
Right, yeah, that's a good question. Thank you. So for us right now, we've um, we've joined some other districts in Maryland like Montgomery and Howard. In um in in blocking ChatGPT for right now while we study this. This is obviously probably the hottest topic right now in K twelve and higher ed technology. Um, there's a lot of debate around it. Uh, in fact, tomorrow, a group of districts are meeting virtually. Uh, led by Fairfax County Public Schools and this is the topic of conversation. Um, so there's pros and cons to it. Um, obviously, from an ethical, moral consideration, when we think about the the possibility of plagiarism. And 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 other and other um potential misuse of it. Um, right now, we need to explore that piece and how we would address that through training, like you're saying, through awareness. Um, but the reality is AI is is not going away. So we're going to, as a community, as of educators, grapple with this in terms of trained staff. Uh, in how to spot it, how to leverage it. Um, there's a lot of uh pro ChatGPT. Um, educators out there where uh ChatGPT could become a teaching tool and help um inform responses that students might have. Uh, we can break apart of an AI generated response and see how that would compare to one that we would do on our own. So we're in the um under review phase of this right now with other districts, deeply engaged in conversations about how, about where the future of AI is in education.
Um, and and my last question uh gets to a conversation of myself and Dr. Um, because Murray had um on the hill about. Uh, access and um there there's sort of, I don't know, urban deserts around our wifi. Um, I'm glad that we're we're doing these virtual days now so that if and when another outbreak happens. Um, we'll be, we'll be able to understand where the gaps are. How confident are you with this particular budget that if something were to happen next year? That we have the resource to make sure every student in the district had access to to wifi?
Uh, I'm I'm very confident of that and and let me tell you why. Um, at the height of uh virtual learning for us last year, about a year, a little over a year ago. When we went into virtual learning, Dr. Goldson and the board made the wise decision to shut everything down for a couple of weeks around the holidays. As uh Omicron was picking up and was wreaking havoc in districts and just creating a difficult time operationally. We had about five thousand hotspots issued at that time. Um, and uh, over the course of last school year, uh, less than three hundred were actually ever needed and used. So when we look at the data for where the 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 outages are that you're talking about. We're able to pinpoint to certain schools and certain communities. And what we're doing now is working very closely with the community school coordinators and parent engagement assistants in certain schools where we know. Uh, our data is pointing us to. And the federal government, a- as you may know through the FCC, came out with a affordable connectivity program. Where 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 uh families can essentially um get their internet, either wifi broadband or a hotspot. At no cost. And so what we're doing right now is building up the infrastructure to facilitate that. Uh, so that families have that, because then it's not the school system in a pinch providing it. But actually, we are, we're setting families up for for um it for for an indefinite period of time, for a much longer timeframe. So that's our effort right now. So I'm I'm very confident in that. Um, and our schools have been great in working with us in that regard.
Thank you.
Former Booze Strider.
All right, thank, thank you so much and uh thank you, uh, Dr. Zuckerman. I wanted to congratulate you on your national recognition recently.
Thank you.
In the um magazine of your professional peers. And I think, you know, some of the questions answered, they were absolutely exactly what board members in our uh Prince George's County should be. Watching. So I did want, I did want to ask if you could talk a little bit about uh the the, what you noted in that article. About how your um strategically, uh, sort of the strategic financing of the future. Was, you know, something of of note, uh, that I think of we're being looked to, how we do this as a large school system. And then my other question is, if you could circle back to Canvas along the lines of Board Member Valentine focusing in on the students. of Board Member Valentine focusing in on the students, this this budget does have significant resources for for teachers and staff around Canvas. And 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 what are those, I guess, what I'm thinking about is the metrics of the teacher's comfort level and using Canvas and how you're measuring that. Because at this this point in time, as a parent user, you know, one one can see that there's a wide variety of usage still among teachers. So if you could just talk about how this budget, what I note, it seems like there's going to be significant resources coming with this budget. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the question. So with respect to to the funding, we've been fortunate, as other districts have, with the SIR funding and to to really seed the one-to-one program in Prince George's County Public Schools and elsewhere. So we have a plan to continue to invest in technology through SIR funding all the way up till the the final deadline that we can, which is September twenty-four. And and that will enable us to to purchase devices that should have a lifespan of about four years after that with warranties. So I feel very good about that. What what we've, what what I've also done and I've partnered with Lisa Howell, our our acting chief financial officer, and her predecessor, Mike Hurstman, to look at a ten-year spending plan that smoothes out when we're purchasing Chromebooks and laptops for staff for that matter, so that we're not buying forty thousand one year and none the next year, and then another forty thousand next year. Because then with that uneven spending creates these fiscal cliffs that become very difficult to manage. So we're looking to smooth that out over the next ten years. But ultimately, it's it is going to be a local obligation that we're going to have to figure out how to deal with locally once the SIR funding expires. So that that is, and that's the case everywhere. And so my colleagues around the state, around the country, we're just having these conversations right now about we're investing so much, resources are all digital. Once the federal funding dries up, it's going to be, it's it's it is a an obligation that we're going to have to assume. So I don't have a great answer, except to say that we have the plan in place that's dependent on the funding. With respect to Canvas, yes, we we have variability among our users, just like we did with Google Classroom before that and other technology applications. We we just have a, we run the gamut. We had a meeting with Instructure, the vendor for Canvas. We've been pushing hard, along with other districts, to get more sophisticated analytics for our usage rate. Because surprisingly, as as great as Canvas is and as as well known as it is in the space, the administrative analytics that a district would use or a college or university would use are actually pretty limited. So they're in a beta testing phase. They they assured us that by March or April, there's going to be an analytics console that we can have much greater insight. Because right now, it is a painful process to download the user hits by day or by month. But we do have a pretty good sense of the area that we need to go forward with training this summer and next year. And you're right, in this budget, there's a request for positions to address integration, not just Canvas, but smart panels, for example, that we intend to have about hopefully a hundred percent coverage by the end of the summer in our schools. So using that, integrating Canvas, digital textbooks, it just, everything is online now. So we recognize the importance of training. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
So Dr. Zuckerman, really quickly back to the topic of AI, just a a question in general. As we know that the OpenAI, the software platform that developed ChatGPT, is not unique, but it's the hottest topic right now. It's the it's the most well-known one. It is a free platform, but at the same time, it also has a a pro version, which you can purchase for X amount of dollars per month. I guess my question is this, do you, what what budget implications do you see or foresee in the future as we try to combat things like this? And last part too, is we know, again, OpenAI, that created ChatGPT, also released a software called AI Text classifier, which is the reverse. It identifies things that AI produces. And we know that in the future, that they'll probably have some form of, I'm not calling antivirus, but like anti-AI software that we can implement throughout PGCPs. But, you know, to what end? Because AI is constantly evolving. So that that had to be a really robust software. So I guess, again, my question is, what budget implications do you foresee for the future of protecting against AI? Specifically plagiarism aspect of it?
So I I I really see two areas. One is it potentially in applications that you're talking about. So the reverse, the opposite applications. I I don't, we, so, because those are going to become more sophisticated too. So the the that cost there, and I don't have a a budget number for you today of what that application is. My my one concern with that is that, and and you would know this well, is you you we end up going down a whack-a-mole road because one application pops up to address another, and then another code is written to address that. So I, nothing's going to be perfect here, but I think that that's one area. And two, and I don't know that we necessarily need funding for this as much as it is going to be folding into our training and development plan. So as we work with staff just on on understanding this tool differently and better. So there could be some training. Definitely will be training implications, the costs associated with that. I'm not, I'm not sure just yet.
Yeah, I agree. And like you said, things can just constantly keep popping up. And as students and users kind of figure out how to use the tool through prompt engineering, as you know, you know, just tweaking the certain description of something produces an entirely new, either, you know, paragraph or art piece or things like that, and that field is is developing. So I I think I, I will definitely agree with you on those two focus areas. So thank you for answering my question. Mr. Briggs, we'll go over to you.
Thanks so much, Dr. Harris. Dr. Zuckerman, I just had a question around student achievement and the products that we use to track student achievement or to support in academic interventions in ELA and math. Could you just speak to some of the programs that have promising results and that are effective that we've been utilizing as a district?
Yeah, I'm, we have a report that Dr. White produced for, I believe, is the Academic Achievement Committee. And I will definitely ask that we recirculate that just from the variety of academics, whether it's iReady or I'm blanking on some of the other interventions that she has specifically. But we have, we have done this presentation, I mean, but Dr. White's team, so I will get that to you.
Great. And then I just have one other question about the replacement fee for the laptops. I know that for some parents, that could be a burden for them to, you know, if something happens to the laptop that's outside of their control, is there any type of stipend or anything that exists to support families, particularly those that have high needs and addressing that issue?
Yeah, we're having this conversation now, just as a part of our sustainability for the long term. So if there's an incident that occurs, regardless of what the damage is, the first, the first time that occurs, that we we ask families to contribute thirty dollars. And if families are not able to do that, then we will work out repayment options, loaner devices. I I think the the issue that we're running into, and I know other districts are too, is what happens if there's multiple damaged devices, and that's something that I'm working through with specific schools and principals about. Again, loaner devices, payment, repayment options, because then that can get pretty expensive. So this is something that for the long term, my colleagues and I around the state are going to have to resolve just how to handle, because these are the new textbooks. So but we do work with families on an individual basis as needed.
Okay, thanks so much.
So Dr. Zuckerman, a follow-up question for me. Can you speak a little bit to the to the partnerships and programs we have that are active or rolling over from previous years that are actually called savings to the district, whether it's school individual, like Verizon partnerships, or whether it is district-wide? Can you speak a little to that?
Sure, I'm 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 not sure I'm understanding completely. Like, you're talking about like the Verizon Learning Initiative Innovation Grant that we have at at Nicholas Orham and Buck Lodge, I believe, are two schools. So we have some partnerships in certain schools. So those are two examples with Verizon, where every student gets a device that's 5G LTE enabled and which is really great. We have a very, very strong partnership with Dell, where we have a student tech program. And in fact, we are looking to expand that, where Dell will train our students to become certified technicians and as a part of our CTE pathway. And those are, those are the primary ones. We don't necessarily have one with Apple, per se. And I I'd have to get you some more information from from CTE with with respect to some of the others.
And and in terms of limitations, because I know we're looking to expand these programs to reach as many students as possible, what are some of the the barriers we're facing?
So for expansion, it comes down to just capacity to manage programs. So when we look at, for example, our Dell student program, you know, Dell would like to come in and can support us in multiple schools. We have to identify a program lead at each school. And I heard somebody earlier, a board member, talking about just the staff, teachers are overwhelmed, and they start taking on multiple responsibilities. We are technicians, for example. Our technicians are fabulous, but we have seventy-three technicians for two hundred and eight sites. So identifying a couple of schools and going deep with a couple of technicians to work with Dell and work with students is feasible, but doing that across many schools becomes, we just get stretched thin. So I I I honestly, it becomes just a bandwidth issue on the human capital side.
Understood. Okay, thank you. I'll follow up with additional questions and then thank you for your answers. Colleagues, last call for questions for Dr. Zuckerman. I know we've got about fifteen minutes left in our session, but if no one has questions, I'll let him go here. Chair Mickens-Murray.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Zuckerman. When computers need to be repaired, I think I understood that you have some students that do those repairs under an intern program.
So we are partnering with Dell in a couple of schools to do a student repair program. My my vision, my long-term goal here is that we have a student, we have a a full-blown student repair program across the district. And in fact, last summer, under the Prince George's County Summer Youth Employment Program, we had, I want to say eighteen, it might have been nineteen students who were employed through the county, working in our Forestville Repair Center, repairing Chromebooks with our technicians all summer long. I'd like to replicate that throughout the year. Dell is going to be a partner with us. We're starting a small this spring, but our goal is to roll that out in a much bigger scale next year, so that, yes, we would have students repairing it. It's it's just a win-win. It's great for them. It's it's just amazing.
Okay, so being ambitious, what would you need from this board to say accomplish one-fourth of that before next year?
I will think about that, and I will get back to you on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Chair Murray. Mickens-Murray. Any last minute questions, colleagues? Okay, here and none. Any last comments from you, Dr. Zuckman? Thanks for being here with us today.
I just want to say thank you to the board for supporting what we're doing to just to continue to to close the close the digital divide. Greatly appreciated. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your advocacy at the state level and the national level. Hugely appreciated.
Definitely. Thank you. Okay, so that concludes all of the departments we're speaking with tonight. Dr. Goldson, anything to add before I turn back over to her? Chair Mickens-Murray. You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Thank you, Board Member Harris. And many thanks to our CEO, our budget team, and the division chiefs for sharing their expertise by answering board members' questions this evening. Our next step, to the division representatives, please take under advisement the recommendations made by this evening by board members as you proceed with the development of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four proposed budget. Are there any additional questions or comments from board members at this time? Anything you want to say to the staff?
Nothing for me, except are you going to, you're going to outline next steps, my next milestones we have, Chair Murray?
No, that's, that's you.
That's me? Okay.
Yes.
So, so, sorry, I wasn't prepared. Let me get my get my dates right. And Dr. Goldson, again, correct me if I'm I'm wrong on this. So tomorrow, board members, we will be submitting our budget amendments. You'll get an email tonight specifically how to submit those. And it'll include the CFO and her team, as well as Dr. Goldson and the chair. So tomorrow, February the third, we'll be submitting budget amendments. And you also have the opportunity to submit any follow-up questions before close of business in that Excel document that I shared with you all. Staff will be responding to our budget amendments next Wednesday, February eighth. We also had an OBAFA meeting at five PM Eastern Time, where we will be discussing those comments and the and the amendments, and we will be moving those amendments through the committee. And following that, we will have our next meeting on February thirteenth, where we will discuss budget amendments. And following following that meeting, our vote of the full budget is February twenty-third.
Thank you so much. I appreciate.
Can I, can I, can I say something really quickly?
Sure.
On a good note, Dr. Zuckerman just jumped off. There was a student from Largo High School who the district hired to work on computers in the school district. He eventually got his degree and currently works at NASA. And so I just wanted to highlight that someone who was working and and doing some fixing up its computers, he was a high school student, eventually went on, I think, at the University, Maryland University College, and is now employed at NASA. So those programs have a long-term impact long after those students leave the district.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments from any other board members?
Mr. Valz, I need you to check his contact with me offline. You have it.
Hey, third time is the charm. Any other comments from board members? Hearing none. May I have a motion to adjourn the February second, twenty-twenty-three proposed budget work session?
So moved.
I'm moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you. Any nays? The ayes have it. This concludes our February second, twenty-twenty-three, second FY twenty-twenty-four proposed budget work session. For those who will be joining us at the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four proposed budget public hearing at seven PM, the meeting will be accessed using a different Zoom link to the public. You can find the proposed budget hearing Zoom link by visiting the board webpage. To board members, this link will be provided in your email. Thank you all for attending tonight's proposed budget hearing. For those of you transitioning to the next meeting, for those of you transitioning to the next meeting, I will see you at seven PM. If not, have a good night. Thank you all. See you in a few minutes.